Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School District Meeting for Wednesday, May twentieth. If it's all right with the board members, I'd like to hold up on the executive session and move down to the presentation, sorry, the Pledge of Allegiance, and then do our presentation. And then after that, we can go into our executive session. And when we come out, if you can, after public comment, if it's all right with the board, I would like to have Kevin do his summer job. I apologize for not getting him written on, typed on the agenda, but, so, is that okay? Is that all clear with the board?
Sure.
All right. So, we will do our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No.
No. Okay.
So, at this time, I would like to introduce Becky GiJanto. She's our media specialist for Powell School. And one of the observations that I did in class this year with Mrs. GiJanto was the use of Storybird. And so, she recruited a few students this evening to share their stories. So, Mrs. GiJanto, would you like to share a little bit about Storybird?
Sure.
And introduce the students?
Absolutely. Actually, I have three empty chairs here, so I'm hoping that they're gonna make it. Storybird is a free app. I love apps. It's a free Google app. And it allows, in fact, I'm on it right now. It allows students to write their own stories and to use the artwork of hundreds of different artists that they can choose from. So, what I struck to do with them, struck to do with them was to have them, let the artwork inspire them to do some writing. So, they were able to search, first, they had to have a topic of their choosing, and then they were able to file through, go in and put their topic in, like, say, if it was about dogs or something. And they'd go in and they could look at all the artists that had done any kind of artwork on that topic. And they'd just pull it in, you know, put the slides in, and then tell their story. And these students today, and the others that I hope make it, we chose, well, right now, we have Autumn, we have Riley, and we have Sam.
David, Davidson, I could do his story for him if he, if he can make it.
We'll have to see with them. Okay. Anyway, these students are chosen for the creativity, for the effort that they put into it, for their imagination, and they really did a great job. They're all so very different, and that was another reason they were chosen. So, I'm not sure, thirty-five, thirty-three, do you want us to just go ahead and start?
If you would, please.
I just also wanna say that Todd was very supportive of this. It'll, Storybird can, will allow anybody to make up to thirty-five stories for free. But I wanted to expand it to different grade levels, so, for, I think it was seventy-six dollars, I got a hundred and thirteen. So, and the great part about Storybird is that these are private, so they're not out there in the general population, but that Storybird is a very safe and reliable source even to go and read stories. So, let's see, look at my master list, I'm missing the first three people, so the next one up would be Sam. So, let me get to your class. And Sam has a great story, and it's called, oh, I'm sorry, Riley? Yeah, I forgot, you're right here, number two. Okay, Riley. Riley has a story that's called "Stolen Princess." There you go, Riley.
The Stolen Princess. One day, a little princess woke up in the middle of the night to a sudden hotness and a big, loud voice saying, "Come out, Isabel." She was taken away by dragons who live in the dark. The purple one's name is Spike, and blue one is Spark, and the tan and green one is Flame, and the fire red one is Flame, the leader. The evil Duchess heard about it and wanted her gone. Few years later, a yak returned to her. She thought it was Duchess who set the yak. Then the princess realized that it wasn't the Duchess, it was the Duchess's daughter, Kylie, who set the yak. She brought up a bunch of swans that were magic, and every year, she'll her pain. She sent them back to where they came from and to also heal someone else's pain. The Duchess's daughter was captured and sent to jail by her mother for helping the princess. The princess bailed her on, they became best friends. The princess was happy, she didn't care about her past. She had gone married and became a queen. That end.
All right. So, Sam. Let me just switch over to your class. There we go. And Sam has a story entitled "The Adventures of Brian."
An awesome adventure story for younger kids.
Yes. Oh, I forgot to mention that. I'm so glad you said that. When they were writing these, they were all picture book format, and they had to write to an audience, because that's always really important for authors, to write to an audience. And their audience were students in grades K through three, and a lot of the students actually were able to, during Read Across America Week, were actually able to read their digital stories to younger students. That was great. Thanks for reminding me, Sam.
The Adventures of Brian. This is Brian. He's an explorer. Brian goes to faraway places to find new things, and he can't stop exploring. His parents used to get mad at him when he went places he wasn't supposed to be. That made him wanna do it more. One day, he made it halfway across the town, but his dad stopped him and said, "Exploring is bad." He kept going. But then he's exploring South America, visiting an ancient castle. Two months later, he went to the desert and met some Native Americans. He also went to an isolated kingdom in Africa. And he met the king. He went to an ancient forest with his friends. In the forest, Brian got turned into a mouse for a while, but then he kept going. One day, he decided to retire, but he remembered what his dad said. Exploring is bad. Brian wanted to prove him wrong. So, he kept on going. The end.
All right. So, now, we have, is there some students? Oh, I can't listen right here. So, Autumn, guess it's you, right? Autumn asked that her, that she get to read last, if she wanted it to be a surprise. And hers is called "Teachers Are Important."
Teachers. Teachers are important. Teachers, great homework with perspective. Teachers, spend time on your work. Teachers are patient with you. Teachers have a positive and loving attitude. Teachers buy things for the class. Teachers help us with our work. Teachers, spend time with us. Teachers have a good sense of humor. Teachers believe in our imagination. Teachers care about our health. Teachers care. That end.
Are there any other students, anybody else coming?
No. I'll do David's.
Is it all right? We have time to do one more. He wanted to do another student that couldn't be here. They didn't mean to make room, so. So, this is David, David Wellspeak's story, right?
Yep. Desert Snake's adventure.
The Desert Snake, okay. So, come on up. So, this is David's story.
The Desert Snake's Adventure, Animal Adventure, Animal Adventure. The Desert Snake's Adventure. Once Timmy the snake decided to go on an adventure. He found a tiger named Johnny playing with a ladybug. He said, "Wanna go on an adventure with me?" "Sure," said the tiger. "Can I take my ladybug friend with me?" "Yes," said the snake. Then he found Davy the bear. The bear asked, "Can I come along with a mouthful of honey?" "Yes," said the snake. They found a turtle named after his father, Shellshock, joined the adventure along with his new friends. A dancing zebra came along and asked to come along. They said yes. Jimmy the zebra was so excited that he danced for three hours. A horse with a beard named Bullseye joined the adventure. He was so happy, happy his grin was from ear to ear. A dancing monkey, named after his great-grandpa, Dancing Tommy, joined the adventure. A hairy yak called Little Harry decided to join the adventure with the snake, the monkey, the zebra, the bear, the turtle, the bull, and the tiger. Kangaroo with an awesome name of Hover then joined the adventure. Twin hedgehogs with the same name, Big Tommy, finally grew old enough to leave the nest, so they decided to join the adventure. Now that all of us are ready, let the adventure begin. They must first find humankind. Humans live in houses. Let's go find a house and discover the humans within. Look, look what we found. Humankind, said the snake. Let's find more of this species. A troll passed along looking sad. Finally, they reached the destination, a human house. The monkey danced in joy. The end.
All right, thank you.
All four stories were wonderful, and Sam, thank you for sharing David's. The artwork, as you can tell, really did inspire the writing, very creative.
Yes, it was, I love it. It's great.
It's just random people's artwork.
Well, actually, no, they're accomplished artists, and they have to submit a hundred pieces of artwork in order, and they have to be reviewed in order to get accepted. And there isn't any, any type of artwork that could be considered inappropriate, so that's another great.
Great job, thank you. You guys did an awesome job.
Yes, you did.
So, before you leave, parents and board members and other folks that are visiting, Sam and I had a little conversation the other day. As you know, our students are involved in Smarter Balanced Assessment testing.
I am.
And we've been getting through this Smarter Balanced test. Sam, would you wanna approach the school board and kinda share your feelings and your thoughts about this week?
I'm, I know that the S-Back for us is actually an experiment this year, but I think that some, that some of these S-Backs could actually be changed a little. Um, I don't think, some, these S-Backs just aren't really, should I say this? They get kinda old after a while, and I think that maybe these S-Backs could be a little bit more engaging for students. So, as I said earlier to Mr. Phillips, I'd like to put a no down on my name, that they could really revise, they revise these S-Backs a little. Also, some of the questions are, are pretty hard for students. It gets really, it gets frustrating. And I know that we have to do standardized testing, but I think if they could find a test that's actually a bit better for students, that that would be beneficial.
So, more appropriate for your, for the age level?
Uh, no, more like something that was, the questions are sometimes a bit confusing, the wording, it's worded weird sometimes, and it does get pretty old doing the S-Backs. And, um, and another thing is, a lot of time, you, a lot of times, you don't know what, how many questions you have. That's something I like to know on my tests, how many questions I have to do.
We appreciate your thoughts, Sam, and it was very interesting the way we were talking together the other day, so thank you for sharing, we appreciate it.
And I also wanna say that Autumn and Riley agreed, yes.
Well, we are very fortunate to have our assistant superintendent here, who I'm sure will take that information back to central office and share it with the powers that be.
Yes. Thank you for that.
Great job with the stories as well. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you, parents, for your support.
Parents are all from fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
And sixth.
Riley's in sixth grade. Riley's in sixth grade.
See if these guys can be present.
Great job.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I think we need to, we need to adjourn to executive session for a short period plan.
So, moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, and we will adjourn to the, and we'll be back. I don't need to take it anywhere.
Joyce, here, Joyce.
Joyce, here. All right. So, we're down on the agenda, number three, public comments. Is there any public comments? Okay. All right, three point five. Okay, Kevin, you're up.
Just have some summer project stuff that we're gonna be doing. I have some copies of the estimates on doors and stuff, if you guys would like a copy of those?
Yes, yes.
I think I have, I have that sheet, thank you.
This is my first year at this here, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the doors.
Does this complete them all?
Yes. That's all.
This is the entire list of our doors?
Yep. That is six double doors and eight single doors that are left. As you look, you'll see five double doors and then another double door because it was listed separate because it's the one in kindergarten wing. And it's gotta have a little bit, it's a little bit more because it's gotta have a little bit of carpenter work done to it because it's an older version.
An older door, sure.
Yep. And the kitchen door was a single door, but that's a little different, so that was priced separately. And he also said, depending on how many we do, if we can do them all, he can give us a discount on all the doors. So, he'd probably, anywhere from, he said, a couple hundred dollars off the double doors and maybe a hundred off the single doors. Won't know till he calls his distributor to put the order in. But he said definitely, if we do several of them, he can, he can give us a discount on that. So, he gave us the worst, you know, per door price. Okay. And I asked him this morning, I called him, and just said, you know, if the board decides to do all these, can we start, like, immediately after school is out and have them done for?
The summer?
Right.
Yeah.
For the end of summer. And he said absolutely, he said they would probably start the very first of July. He'd have to get them ordered. They take a little time to get, start them the first of July, and he said they would definitely, unless there was some major complication, there was no problem, it'll be done before school starts.
Oh, good.
And that, I think, after being here this winter and seeing some of the drafts that are coming through those doors.
Yeah, that's, that's a plus.
I mean, there's a couple double doors where if you get real windy, you get a little snow, actually comes through the bottom, you know what I mean?
So, if we complete this list of our doors, that means our doors and windows are completely done?
Yes.
All the windows, all the doors?
I'm sure, I'm, I know it'll be, all the doors are done, and I'm quite sure that they said all the windows were done, so I can double check that with them.
I heard that.
But I think he, when he was, came in and redid, he went around and remeasured everything from the old estimates, he came down and redid everything, and I think he told me that all the windows were done.
I think in this whole section, but I don't think in the K-one, I think there's some windows down there that may still need to be.
In the kindergarten wing, yeah?
You've got new windows, don't you, Dad? Yeah.
Did first, though? And that's somewhere in the.
I can call, I can call him tomorrow and check with him.
Somewhere in the K-one wing.
Okay.
I think we still needed some windows, but this would complete the door.
If you, if you could do.
I can definitely call him and.
If you could find out.
Sure.
Where we stand with the windows.
Yep.
That'd be important.
Yep, I can do that.
And the price on them, if we do need them.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll call him personally in the morning.
I just wanted to let the board know, Jim Kosis couldn't make it tonight, but he sent an email, and it stated that we have, like, seventy-five thousand dollars we could spend for the summer projects, that it still would leave us additional, let's see, that would mean forty-five thousand prior to July one and then thirty after July one, which would be the two. And that still would leave us a hundred and seventy-nine thousand set aside for future projects. And these windows look like they came in great.
Yeah.
Even if we get them a little cheaper.
Cheaper, right. And I think we can save a couple thousand off that bottom line price.
And then you have on page two, upgrade emergency material light.
Yes. And that's all the emergency lighting, you're gonna change the LED, and all new exit signs, LED, and the new exit signs will have emergency lighting on them, like the ones in the gym, there's not a lot of emergency lighting, but there's three exit signs, emergency exits that would have the lights on them also.
Switch to LED.
When we did the exterior, like, there was a serious government rebate for the LED.
I, I don't know, but I can, I'll check with them.
This monument?
Yep.
Monument?
Yep, Monument gave us a assessment also, and I can check with them.
It was a lot.
I came in kinda in the middle of that project, and Rich was actually handling that at the time, but I can check with them to see if there's any of that government rebate going on with that.
And I have a question on the last page. Okay, send it. Replace tiles on the gym floor, and that's a lot of money.
It is, and I figured that would be one that we would have to hold off on.
And since we're talking about the gym, my biggest concern with the gym is the deafening echo in there with all those kids. It's really, really loud. I was thinking, you might wanna look at the ceiling before we look at the floor.
They, they put a whole, no, according to, yeah. And according to what I was told, they put a ton of new tiles in the center of that, you know, all the way out.
Like the baffling.
Because it was so bad, you couldn't hear anything.
Where was that done?
Before me.
Yeah.
It's still bad. It's still bad.
Was it that long ago, three, four years ago?
Yeah, but it's, it's still bad.
And one of the reasons the gym floor was, came in as high as it did is because if you look at it, it goes like this, you know what I mean? You push a former machine across or whatever, there's two or three whoops in it, and when they, if, and when they ever do that gym floor, they're gonna level it. They'll come in with a leveler, I talk to them, and they, they will, or a leveler.
And my other comment on the gym floor is, I'm in favor of the supervisory union having one, one architect or somebody on staff to oversee all these projects, and I was just thinking, do we need tiles, do we need something else? Other materials available, and that, they should be, that should be questioned rather than, I don't know if this is what we need or we don't need, but I would just like to see somebody.
Yeah.
Somebody expert on gymnasium multipurpose floors.
Yep.
On what's out there.
I know how we can put a rubber floor in there, and I don't know if they're super happy with it. In the elementary school.
Can we put the acrylics on official list to look at some of that?
Yeah.
A lot of stuff, and I'm not sure.
It hurts to be in there at lunchtime.
I have put in probably a dozen or so tiles over the school year replaced in there that are coming up, and there's another area under one of the carpets this summer, we're probably gonna have to replace about fifteen or twenty or so, which is the end of the world, the rest are pretty good. It's not like, it's not like the gym has to be done this year or anything, it's just we did get an estimate while they were here doing it. And we could even, like, have decided to do all these doors because I think that's where you're gonna save the most.
Yes.
As far as energy efficient. Even the hallway downstairs that we put in for could wait another year if it had to type thing. It's not, we got some tiles that are chipping and that are worn, but it's not like any of them are coming up and they're a hazard factor for any of the kids or anybody, you know what I mean?
Is that one on the last page, we replaced lower hall?
Yes.
West?
Yep.
So, what does the board think about the doors?
Yes.
Are the doors part of the, are any of the doors part of the gym?
Yes.
Because of the problem that we have this winter?
Oh, but that, that wasn't the doors, that was the frosties.
That was because of the frost that came in.
Frosties on the.
And I don't, I can.
How can we fix that?
Well, I don't know.
So that doesn't happen again.
Because I can call, but the problem is that they try to raise them, then you're gonna have a lip coming up, you know, you're gonna have a trip hazard coming in. And what really, probably when they black topped out there, it should've been brought down a little bit further, so if you did get a frost, but the problem is that you already got water because of the slope, you got water coming that way anyways. And then we had to, obviously, an exceptional amount of frost this year that was an issue everywhere. So, I don't know, I can ask White's for a suggestion on that to see if he has any answer.
Because they're part of the replacing.
Yeah, because there's three, there's three of them that are going in that gym. And actually, that last door that was into the hallway, bottom of the stairway, we had the same problem there. But that ground is so close that once that frost lifted just a little bit.
This is the first time it's ever happened.
That was my understanding.
It was the very first time, I've never seen that happen before.
It's quite a safety problem, though, when the emergency exits are unopen the whole time.
Yes, it is.
I think as far as the gym projects, that, getting that corrected or corrected or something.
I would say that if he lifts that up, you're gonna have a trip hazard there.
Personally, I don't think you need to, I would, I personally would not do anything with the foundation of the door itself. I'd leave that the same. If anything, maybe we could get an engineer to let us know, because there is water under there.
Right.
And we just had it blacktopped a couple of years ago. So, I think the problem lies there.
Right.
I don't, I don't think we should be changing.
A little lower outside, so that if it does, you got room for it to, for frost to. But the other section with that is, is then you've.
One way or the other, we gotta make sure.
You've got a water problem coming in, but maybe they could build the outer bank of that up and drop that, so that. But I don't think they can, you know, I can ask him just to make sure he doesn't have any suggestions to White's, you know what I mean? But I don't think there's anything because you're gonna, if you raise them, you're gonna have a trip hazard.
Just thinking of the square box, and you got a door.
Right.
If you start monkeying with the framework.
Well, if you bring it up, then you got a lip there.
Right. You're gonna have more problems. I think you should, we can look at the walkway itself.
And as far as the black topping, he gave one estimate, one price, but it could, he divided into two sections, and I talked to him this week and the blacktop gentleman, and he said that he could break that into two estimates if we didn't have money to do the whole thing. He would do from the walk-in cooler to the dumpster, was one section, and then from the dumpster up to the main parking lot of the road. And he said, I can, I can get, you know, depending on what the board wants to do, I can give you two separate. So, if you wanted to do one part of it this year, one part of it next year.
Well, I think I agree with Jim Kosis, and we probably should keep it right around seventy-five thousand. If we can get, I think it sounds like the board wants to do all the doors, that's gonna save us money.
I think so.
Really, in the end, it will save us energy.
These doors are really.
So, I think if we can get the doors cheaper, I'd go ahead and do all the doors, and then, I'm just, I don't have a calculator, I definitely would do the emergency lighting.
And windows on the one we can do, if we need to.
And check on the windows for us.
Yes, I will. I'll call him in the morning.
Wanted to come back with the price. I guess we could try to keep it right around seventy-five.
Okay.
I mean, I'm saying if it goes over a few, it's not gonna make that much difference.
But let's keep it as close to that as it can.
As close as you can, and maybe we can do some of that repaving and, if you can get a price on two separate things.
Yeah, I'll tell them that, go ahead and give us two. In the ceiling, you know, they just lined the parking lot last year, just relined everything last year just before I came.
Yes.
Is my understanding. So, maybe even if we went another year without ceiling, just because, to get some of that, because he's gonna reseal it and then have to reline everything.
Right, right, you're right.
It was just relining. I mean, if there's enough money to reseal, that's one thing, but if we had to wait another year, because he's gonna come in, clean everything, and then he has a machine, he said that'll blow all the cracks out, he'll fill all the cracks, and then he'll put two coats, he'll clean the oil spots, put two coats of sealant, then reline.
The main thing that we have to make sure that's done, if it, if it has to be done every year, is the wording. The main thing that we have to make sure that's done, if it, if it has to be done every year, is the wording, "No parking."
Yep.
Emergency, no park, whatever the wordings are.
Sure.
That has to stay because visual learners, they need to see that. There can't be parking where it says "no parking." And I think it was towards the end of last year, it had worn away and it was gone, so I mean, people didn't understand that.
Right.
When they saw it not there, they said, "Oh, now we can park here." Well, they can't. And I think that's important for emergency reasons only.
Okay.
So, looking at this list, is this the list that you feel is top priority for the summer?
I do.
Okay.
Yep.
So if you could go ahead and tweak the numbers for us.
Okay.
If you could email, email it to Jim Kosis and myself.
Okay.
And then we can sit down, what is the board, yes, Jim?
So, we're okay categorically, fifty-eight and a three, which gets us sixty-one or sixty-two. I would like to see the heat problem, the next on the list, to get a price on fixing the heat or whatever we have to fix there in the gym.
Yes, that was coming. I got that on the list.
That could be ten, fifteen thousand real quick, which cancels everything else.
But Jim, we also have to check on windows, because that might, how much that would be too.
Yes, he's gonna do that.
So we got fifteen thousand left, so the driveway thing may not happen.
Well, he's gonna get, he's gonna break it down, right, it may not, but just, we'd like to get a price of the two of them anyways.
Well, I'm saying is, the heat problem wasn't on the list, and once we get that price, that's the next thing, I think.
Yeah, that is on my list to ask him to do, is to have someone come in and check the heating system.
You say the heaves?
Yeah.
Heaves.
Oh, the heaves.
The doors.
Because the safety was a real, I was, that was, you know, that was pretty bad having a gym non-evacuatable.
No, with the exception of cutting out the blacktop at that point, there was nothing that-
Yeah, it was terrible.
It was done, yep, absolutely. Absolutely.
Crapping, you know, two hundred kids in the gym.
And Nathan, was it Nathan that did the job?
Nathan did the job last year, well, Nathan came in and did the excavating and then Montron came in and blacktop.
Oh, he did the blacktop.
But I don't know who this was done before, before last year, I'm not sure when it was done, but-
Well, it was just recently done.
Couple of years ago or something?
I think so.
Not long at all, no.
Because last year they did behind the building.
I have odor filters, that's less than two years.
And out to the pool.
Yeah, it's been done recently.
Yeah, two years.
Yeah.
But it's like they should've took it down a couple more inches, but then they probably were concerned about the water. But this year, with that drain that they put in last year, we didn't have a problem with water coming into the gym at all when it snowed. We obviously had a lot of snow.
Close it.
But that took care of, you know, it's not perfect, but it did take care of a lot of that water. I don't know how bad it was before, because I'm here, but I know this year, because Todd asked me once, he said, "How's the water doing out there?" As it was thawing. And I said, "Nothing's coming close to the school, that's it, that drain is working."
Yeah.
It was working.
Okay, the other thing I had, I know I misunderstood when you said heaves, I thought you meant heat. Actually, Jim, Jim or Doug, if one of you or both of you, I would like to have like a facility committee and work with Kevin as far as our heating system goes. We'd like to check into that and see where we stand, how is it working?
I just talked to Alliance Mechanical, the ones that we took on this year, we just came and did some more PM work. And they're gonna give me a price to send two guys down and get on the computer. They got, because they got mechanical guys, their computer guys, and every time they were gonna try to do it this year, we had some issue with the heat and they were here for that, you know what I mean? All of a sudden they'd be coming here for that when we had the coil burst and we had all that other stuff. But they're gonna send, they're gonna give me a price to send two guys down, spend a day on the computer, going through everything on it to see where all the set points are. And then try to tell us what we need to update first.
Okay, good.
And Sam was actually here today, Kelson, and a couple of other things, and I, we were looking at the boilers, I took him in to show him the older boiler. And the older boiler, my understanding is from the sixties. He said he put a new chamber in it.
Yeah, I remember that.
It was a while back, he said, "But I put a new chamber in it," and he looked in there today and said, "The chamber still looks good." And he put a new burner. The new burners were both put in at the same time when the new boiler was put in, when they redid all the, from electric heat to the boiler when all the- And that was in ninety-six, is my understanding. So the guns, the, you know, the burners are the same age and the one boiler is old, but he said, he said, "I can't," he said, "Obviously, a new furnace is gonna probably be more efficient." And he said, "I can't tell," he said, "This one is in good shape," but he said, "It, you know, it's old." He said, "I can't tell you're gonna save five percent or ten percent, I can't tell you're gonna get a five-year turnaround or anything like that because it does," he said, "It's probably not much less efficient than the boiler that's from ninety-six."
I guess, my thoughts were-
But he said he would give us a price.
If we could find out where we're at with it as far as functioning.
Sure.
If we can buy ourselves another year or two, you know, get through the doors and windows, then that would be another, that would be a big ticket, I think.
And he said he would, you know, I did end up leaving it with him that he will get a price together on what it would cost to replace that boiler if we decided to do that. And we would know at least, you know, what we needed for next year or whatever, or whenever we do it.
Very good.
So-
So I'll do that and I'll find out about the blacktop and price.
Yes, well, yes.
Just to have, break it up into two, so we know what both segments are.
And if you could find out about that.
Blacktop.
No, the-
The heaves.
The heaves.
Yeah, the frosties.
What we could do to-
I'll ask him about that. I got an idea that the only answer to that is gonna be tear it up and bring it down more. Because I think, and I will also ask the glass, the door people, just for the sake of knowing if they have any suggestion, if they're, you know, they might say, "Well, yeah, we can do this," but they might say, you know, I think they're gonna say we can't.
Yeah.
But like you say, I think it's gotta be something done outside with that.
Yeah, that would be-
But I will check with them.
To me, I mean, that would be a more sensible thing to go with.
Sure.
All right, this looks good. Okay, any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You would go ahead and order all the doors.
Okay.
Okay, and then get back to us on the windows and everything.
Yeah, I will, I'll check with them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks. All right, personnel, okay, Angie?
The board approves a two percent wage increase with off-contract employees effective July first, two thousand and sixteen.
The motion, right?
Yes.
Seconded.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion on the off-contract wages increase of two percent? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous.
And I also have another motion, the board rescends the vote of March twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to increase the bus drivers' wages by three percent. A yes vote, will we condescend and keep bus drivers at their current year's wages?
That's a motion, we need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous.
No.
Tammy's abstaining.
Tammy's abstaining.
Tammy's abstaining, okay. All right. Okay, so now we're down to our action items. The treasurer's report for April, and everybody, did you get a copy? Okay, is there any questions concerning the treasurer's report? All right, any motion to accept?
Some moved.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
All right, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the treasurer's report for April, signify by raising your hand, it's unanimous. Okay, now we have an update on the solar consortium. All right, in our packet, I believe we got- Did we get it? We did. Must be, I threw it out. Oh, yes, okay. All right, there is a company that is trying to put energy efficiency by putting solar panels. It's a solar developer. And from what I understand, it would save the Pownell Board, which, first of all, the Pownell School generates, I believe it's over eight hundred thousand units of electricity that we space. We are the biggest user of electricity in the town. What this company is, would do is to, if we join them, is to give us anywhere from twenty to twenty-five percent in decrease in our electrical bills. The only setback on that is if we go with this and then within, I think it's two years, if we decide that we don't want it after that, we would have to pay back whatever we saved in the two-year period. I mean, if we go with it, I can't see us saying, "All right, I'll take it back, we don't want it." I don't understand we would do that. Donna, you wanna talk a little bit about this?
Yes, and I did have a conversation with Rick Pembroke and Jim Kosis about it. So it was, I was learning about it too. But apparently, several school districts in Vermont have been in this consortium that has been studying the possibility of working together to have a combined effort to build a solar field. It may be here, it may be near here, and it might not even be here in Pownell or in the area. But that this, the solar field will then produce enough electricity that will go into the power grid that it will reduce the amount that all the schools in the consortium will have to pay for their power. So they are, we have been involved with that grant in the SVU. The grant is about to move to a new phase where they want to put out an RFP to study the possibilities of doing the construction that will enable them to build those solar fields. So what we're asking for really is looking at staying, remaining a part of that consortium, that's really your decision tonight, as they continue to build that RFP to construct those solar projects. If it happens, then, when it, once it gets built or the plans go through, then there will be a two percent fee that would be paid to the consultants as, for their fees in creating this system. So for their architect's fees or whatever they have in putting this whole bid together. But then, so then that would, that would slightly reduce your savings that you eventually would have on your power. So instead of twenty-five percent, you'd have a twenty-three percent saving because two percent would go to this company for doing all the consultant work. So it really is not at the point where they are ready to build this or jump into it. It is just, to be, your vote is to, whether you want to maintain a part of this group that as a collective, they're trying to come up with a system that will, for all the schools, reduce their power costs.
Is this like a consensus?
I mean- Yes.
From what I understand, all the, all the other schools and the districts said yes.
All the other schools said yes, they wanted to continue.
I guess my, my question would be, and I should've asked Kevin when he was here, the condition of our roof. I mean, are they gonna come in and put panels on our roof?
No, no, no.
No, no.
It'll be someplace else.
It will.
Won't be on school property.
No.
All right, Jim?
We don't know where it's gonna be at all.
Like the big field you have a little south of here, it could be anywhere in the state, big field like that.
Guaranteed not on our roof.
Not on your roof.
No, 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 no.
And it isn't something that's going to feed your school specifically. It's going to create power that will go into the power grid and then reduce your costs proportionally.
And no guarantee it has to how much, Jim?
Well-
I categorically opposed to this and it was voted on at the Supervisory Union and I spoke against it and I voted against it. My take on this is, this is, this company that's charging these fees, and it's actually, it's not two percent. It's ten to twenty percent of the savings that we get, they would charge us. So what this is, this is a, I wanna say real dealers. These are a group of guys that noticed that there's a law in Vermont where if you have an association of educational institutions, supervisory unions, whatever. There's a law where there's benefits for schools to get involved in solar energy. This would be, this would be a solar field, okay, that, once they get everybody signed up, they go find someplace else to build this. And the example they used when they actually presented it was, it could be in Orleans at the time, they're looking way up north in the middle of nowhere to put these solar panels in. So, the way this whole thing works is electricity in Vermont is primarily hydroelectricity, which costs three or four cents, maybe five cents a kilowatt hour to make, all right? In the last ten, in the last ten years, my electric bill, the per kilo, the gross, the loaded per kilowatt charge, okay, has gone up forty percent. This, what the solar thing is doing is, we sign onto this and this outfit builds this solar thing and by law in Vermont, they get to charge nineteen and a half cents per kilowatt hour for something that's worth five cents. Where does the fifteen cents come from? The fifteen cents comes from everybody in this room. All our bills are gonna get up, all right? Everybody in Vermont is paying a little bit more on your electric bill, so the people that are backing the solar thing can get this premium. So we're, it's all set up where this consortium, and it's, it's a, there's no, at the moment, there's no intrinsic savings in using solar, all right? And the ratings on, and they do it by ratings, and these ratings are, if you're looking at them closely, if they say whatever the megawatts are for the facility, that's between July fifteenth and August fifteenth, between noon and three o'clock in the afternoon, when these things are at peak. So, I think we're taking advantage of the rest of Vermonters. Everybody that, everybody that puts up a solar panel, it's great for the person doing it, all right? But we're all paying for it and I don't see the advantage to it. So there's no intrinsic savings in solar, there isn't, all right? We're paying for-
I don't know if I agree with that.
The field, the field, the field here in Pownell, they're being paid, I understand, thirty-five cents a kilowatt hour. These are ridiculous numbers and they're set by, they're set by law, not by fact. Thank you.
Seventeen cents a week, and ours is fourteen right now, so every time a solar panel is used, they, it's forced into the grid and they have to buy it at seventeen cents.
Thank you, with this contract's at nineteen, this deal's at nineteen and a half.
Listen-
Every, every kilowatt hour that this deal generates, we get paid nineteen and a half cents.
We just went through, we, I'm on the, we're a small water company, Paul, as we may know. We're trying, we're talking about solar system, so a bit of information goes, goes on, and I think your numbers are wrong.
Okay.
But it doesn't matter, any time solar panels are put up, where they are, our electric bill goes up, that is correct.
That's where I'm arguing, this is my basic argument.
But if we don't do it, eventually we're getting into trouble, so it's paid later.
Okay, the state of, the state of Vermont has the lowest carbon footprint for electricity in the country.
Because we buy it, we buy it from the Canadians, that's why.
Huh?
Quebec.
Yeah, yeah. But we, we have, there is no carbon usage in Vermont. So what happens is then the other thing they do, all right, is this, 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 what's the word I wanted? This fantasy of carbon credits, okay? And all they're doing is, these solar panels, they get carbon credits and so somebody-
You can sell them.
Yeah, somebody in Indiana who's producing cheap electricity from coal can buy the carbon credits and keep them in coal. It just scams, it just stinks. I just, I don't like the smell of it, I think, you know, it is a Ponzi scheme because the way it's set up, everybody, everybody can't put solar panels on, okay? Eventually, you run out of people to pay for it, because the people not using solar panels are paying for the people using solar panels, so it's- And Pownell will save money, okay, but I'd rather save money other ways.
Okay, I, we appreciate your concern, all right? Can I hear from some other board members? What is your thoughts?
Well, we're involved with it. They're paying, they're, it's not- They're, they're paying, they're, it's not going to go through, it looks like now, because the state-based rules, it's not, there's not a rule on the army, that's not the issue. They paid for our lawyers and everything. You're paying them to do it, other people do it for free. You get someone else to do the same thing they're doing for free. And then they pay for the land, to the land, if you have it on your own land, et cetera, et cetera. This is not a good deal, not from Jim's point of view, but from that point of view, I don't see why we should have to pay for having someone do that kind of work.
Okay, that's, I understand. Ladies?
I'm against it right now because I don't think there's enough known about it. The panels only last like twenty years, and we're not really sure if they're safe or not. And I know there's a grant out there or some kind of thing for Obama, and I just don't know nothing yet about it, so I'm, I voted against it.
Okay, Katie?
So can I just ask a question to Donna? What does it mean if the, all the other school districts are, have voted for this? Do you know, to us, like, will we be in this?
If we don't vote for it, no.
No.
We'll lose out on the one if we're safe.
But I have to tell you though, even though the school uses a lot of electricity, I have a feeling somewhere down the road, okay, that there's going to be a solar company that's going to come into town. We have two or three different pieces of property that they could set up on. They'll meet the state requirement of setbacks. It's going to happen, it's just going to be a matter of time. So I mean, if we vote no against this, it's not going to be our last opportunity because you have, after the school's usage, highest usage of electricity, you then have the wastewater plant, and there's tons of room down there, tons of unused room that we can't really use for development. Who knows, it might even wind up down there someday. So I mean, I think at this point, we'll just, we need a motion.
Why don't we, why don't I make a motion to approve it? Go ahead, up or down?
Yes.
Yes.
Go through it that way?
Yes, yeah, because you can't make a negative motion.
Can you make a motion?
I'm not, I'm not going to really make an motion.
All right, we need a, we need a motion to accept it.
Make a motion to accept it.
Okay. Second? All right, all right. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. All right? That was the motion. Oh, okay. Oh, I didn't see that.
It's just, oh, just like you said, you did it fine.
Oh, okay. All right, now the next one is, we have a contract for the trash compost and recycling services? I do all that paperwork. All right.
That's a question for Todd, are we happy with our current, our current trash person is?
Let me share something with you, okay? When we had, just recently, we had the issue with the downstairs, with the seal broke or something. It created a lot of extra trash, so much so that the dumpster was almost overflowing. And Kevin called our trash, current trash removal gentleman, and told him, he explained to him what had happened. It was a freak accident, but nevertheless, we had this huge dumpster that he was afraid was going to overflow. And he didn't want that, you know? Parents of the, the school building, the grounds, well, they refused to come down. So I called central office, and it was funny because I said, when is the next contract due? Lo and behold, the next day in the mail, the contract is due. We have two, and my suggestion would not to stay with our current contractor.
Who's our current?
Stella. Did you, did you guys get this in?
Yes.
Yeah, we got it. So then my question to Cindy is, does Todd have a recommendation?
I would have to support what Cindy just said. That was reported to me as well, and it was not, not taken well.
Plus, I'd like to say local, and the other person is local.
Well, to be honest with you, the other person was called, and he said if need be, he would come down. He was willing to. So I mean, that says a lot for...
It does a lot for the school.
Yes. So I guess at this point, we need a motion to award the trash compost and recycling service.
I think we should say out loud if it's more. Should we say the numbers out loud?
It's two hundred and seventy dollars more.
Yeah, just, just let it out. No, I'm just saying, just let it out.
Yeah, no, that's...
We're going with the higher bidder, a little higher.
I make a motion that we go with, am I supposed to say their name? Cam.
A motion to amend seconded, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of awarding the contract to TM Incorporated? Signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous, okay? They go together? Oh, okay, all right. All right, next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion to amend seconded, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? No? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. All right, next on the agenda is policies. Now this one is to adopt.
We already adopted search and seizure last meeting.
Did we?
Yes.
We did. Should be adopted.
And actually, if I can find it, I thought it said so on the paper.
Just going by which in front of me.
Um, I have it here somewhere too.
I know we did.
We did. It was adopted on six twenty.
When?
Oh, wait a minute, that's oh one.
Was it just warned?
Well, in the meeting minutes for April twenty-ninth, it says...
We adopted, I know we did.
Adopt search and seizure.
Oh, we did, okay.
We did.
Just oversight.
Didn't vote on it.
I take it back, excuse me?
I did.
No, you didn't. What, you didn't vote on it?
No, it was something else.
Well, I did, I did just have one thing to add, and I think that, do you have a copy of search and seizure policy?
Yes.
The policy committee did meet about a week ago, and as this, as this policy went around to the different boards, there was a comment made that there wasn't really a provision in there for detailing when parents would be notified that this, that there was a search and seizure going on with a student. So the, in item number four, it's, it's line thirty-five on that policy, you can see in italics and bold that it was added, unless an emergency situation, drugs, alcohol, and safety concerns exist, a good faith effort will be made to contact the parent slash legal guardian prior to a search of a student's outer clothing or personal belongings. And that was added so that parents would be a part of this process to be notified. And that was one of the reasons why there was a request to hold this at another district's board meeting. So we, we thought, it's, it's a change that you should know about, and maybe you would take another vote to adopt it with that amended comment to include parents in the process.
Yes, that's true. And somewhere along the line, I remember that, I remember that question being brought up. So...
So moved, with the amended...
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt five zero eight five, search and seizure with the amended...
Parent notification.
Parent notification, thank you, I knew that. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. All right, item number two.
Yep, number two.
Can I ask one question back on the consenting agenda of Todd? I know we already passed it, but I had a question I didn't ask you. Ask it.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Four seasons land state, spring slash fall cleanup. We're being now, billed now for last spring and...
I think it's spring, spring cleanup.
It says fall.
They probably combine fall and spring cleanup together.
Yeah, usually does. He puts them together.
Puts it in once, and he gives us a wicked break, so don't...
No, I was just curious, that's the thing.
That's why it said fall, yeah. He, he sometimes combines it. He doesn't always put the bill in right away, okay?
Check on it.
It's on page three?
Yeah, it is here. You can check on it.
I was just curious, we're paying for fall cleanup now.
We'll check on it. But it's passed.
All right, getting back to policies, six one four one. This is to warn, computer network and internet acceptable use.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Seconded, did you second it, Jim? Okay, I'm sorry, didn't hear. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor of warning six one four one? Signify by raising your hand. All right, thank you, so that one's a warn. All right, superintendent's report. You've got anything words of wisdom?
I did have one, one comment. Here we go. We have, now that we finally feel that this, well, we're having a frost tonight, so maybe this could not be true, but we were hoping that the snow was finished at this point. And with all the snow days that were added into the calendar, it placed the last day of school on June twenty-two, which is a Monday. And it is, the last day of school is usually a half day. So the superintendent and other boards have, would like to have a motion to amend the calendar so that June twenty-two will be non-student day. The last student day would be Friday, June nineteen. And that teacher, June twenty-two would be teacher and staff work day, but no students on that day, so they would not be transported that day.
Is the nineteenth a half day?
Yes, the last day of school is usually a half day.
So the nineteenth would be a half day.
Would be the last student day.
Last student day, okay, what's the board's pleasure? Are we okay with that?
So moved.
A motion to amend seconded, all those in favor of ending the school on June nineteenth a half a day?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you, very good. That's all your words of wisdom?
That was all my words of wisdom.
Okay. All right, now we'll turn to our principal.
So for tonight's report, I just wanted to maybe just report and touch on some end of the year activities. This Friday, and folks are invited to this as well. We have the traditional Memorial Day celebration, so it'll be at two o'clock this Friday. June the fifth, we'll have the student relay for life here at school. That is at ten o'clock. We were one of the first schools last year to take on relay for life, and now other schools are picking up on this, and a few more schools within our SVSU are doing the relay for life. And the traditional all-school barbecue sponsored by Abbey will be June the tenth, and again, all are invited there as well.
What time is that?
What time is that?
Regular lunchtime, so we'd start at twelve fifteen.
Sure something else.
Hey.
Free meal, like Jim's there, right?
And then June fifteenth is our field day. And Brent Kip, our PE teacher, is coordinating that along with, I believe, Mrs. Dents, this year, first grade teacher, had some different ideas for our students, and the kids really always do enjoy field day. And the day after, June sixteenth, will be our off-campus relocation to where, again, we will leave campus after our fire drill and cross seven, Route seven, to get to the Powell Valley Firehouse. So we'll practice that relocation. At one forty, Vermont State Police was contacted. They will provide the safety net for us to cross seven for our students, and then we will shuttle the kids back with our buses.
That's at one forty?
One forty. And we have other field trips and other events throughout the, between now and the end of the year, and then we just confirmed June nineteenth, the last student day. And that's it. Any questions about end of the year activities? Lots of fun. Kids worked really, really hard this year, so they, they have some fun things to look forward to.
So what about the testing, is that all done?
It is not. June the twelfth is the end of the window, but we're winding down. We have our sixth graders next week that will do the smarter balanced, and then we do the end of the year maps.
Okay, and he, the gentleman that was here, the young lad, he was talking about the smarter.
He was.
He was, and, and you can check into that for us? I think that was a powerful message...
It was a powerful message.
...from a student who is in the trenches, and he's telling us like it is. And as adults, I, I really respected that, and I really appreciate the fact that he came forward, and I loved the way he was marching. He's going to be a leader, he's going to be a leader, there's no doubt about it. He's going to grow to be a politician. But, all right, good. Okay, so, June twelve, June seventeenth, as long as we're throwing dates out here, that is our June meeting at five thirty, the seventeenth, it's a Wednesday. And I know we've got busing discussion on here. I understand from what I've, I've heard, and I think I've said this to two or three people at central office, and maybe they're listening, and because the legislators are not really making any decision until 2017, I have asked, and I guess we have to ask the SVSU, the board members, for a waiver for at least two years. Really don't think we should be making any decision closer than two years away. Now, I heard one, but I think we should stay strong on the two years, which means nothing would change. It may look favorable, but I think we still need to move forward with this.
No, didn't, didn't the superintendent last month call us? We would have answered. I just mean, so he, I see he's not here, so I imagine he didn't have an answer.
The reasoning is, we haven't had a supervisory union meeting in between.
We were supposed to be...
The Powell meeting was a week late, and it was all...
That's right.
The Powell hasn't asked the supervisory union. We have to get the supervisory union board to vote on what we voted here, which they will, oh, okay, before we can, he's going to send a letter next Thursday morning, apparently. That's where we left off. As soon as he gets the vote, he'll send a letter.
What he did say was, he was going to send a letter before the supervisory union meeting, and so we would have an incident and then deal with it, too, with the supervisory union.
Well, they technically are the board that has to ask for the waiver. So they have, he, they're aboard, they haven't met since then.
They're meeting...
They've been, the past, so haven't paid for it a couple times to go ahead.
They did, Joe, they voted, they voted twice now to give the superintendent permission to go for a waiver. What we have asked now was, we've changed the description of the waiver. Now we are asking for a waiver for two years.
But the thing is, is, you know, like we talked about last month, when are the people going to know whether they have a job or not?
Well, nothing will change until we, until the end of the waiver period. And part of the, part of the issue is, we keep getting conflicting messages from the Agency of Education, and what are the timelines, and when does it need to be implemented? So the waiver, in essence, puts the process on hold, so nothing will change until the end of the waiver period. And you're saying through FY seventeen?
S seventeen. Only because the legislators, from everything I've read, it's, nothing pertaining to the schools are going to actually change until 2017. And to me, even at that point, we may not have to worry about it. They're just, it's so convoluted at this point that they don't even know what they're talking about at this point.
But, but the thing is, so we are driving for the next two years guaranteed, is what you're saying.
Not guaranteed.
Not guaranteed. That's why the waiver, the SVSU board is going to ask for a waiver for us to put on, put us on hold for two years.
So we...
And by, by June nineteenth, we should know. We should know before school ends. Common courtesy, I think, would let, if they understand the situation.
Well, actually, the superintendent, I may want to go...
No, we, we didn't have our meeting yet.
We may not have any drivers, what I'm saying, when we come back, we vote June, the end of June, you know, what are these people going to do? They, people are going to be looking for jobs. That was my point with all this.
And I understand...
But the waiver means nothing is going to change, that's what it's for.
Yeah, I know, but this...
Then what are you saying, what if it's not granted? Is he...
What are we supposed to be doing, like all winter?
If it's not granted, what are we going to do before September? Nothing. I mean, it has to be granted. There's not enough time to change everything. So it's, the superintendent expressed that it was, it was just perfunctory. He's already talked... He's already talked to them.
Yes, he's been...
With all the chaos, as Cindy is saying, with the school reorganizations, and this, this is way on the back burner. So we have to, it's like, it's, he's almo, he's almost assured us, we'll get the waiver. And if he doesn't, you know, what are we gonna do besides keep running our own buses?
What we should do is sign a two-year contract in June. Whether we get the waiver or not.
We could do that.
Can I say something? I'm a parent and my daughter drives on bus one. And I think the bus drivers at Powell are excellent. I work at a school and I ride on due fourth. And I've never seen the best bus drivers on, of these, um, Powell bus drivers. They under, they come up and say happy birthday to the kids. They know them. If there's a crisis or something, they give them a hug. And I'm all for Powell bus drivers. They do an excellent job. And please save the Powell bus drivers.
Oh, we intend to. Let me tell you, we, we are bending over backwards to keep that.
I mean, I'll write letter after letter if I have to. They are awesome.
What we did actually, I actually had to share with the board. We, we, there was a survey that went home to all the parents. And the stack was, I'm gonna bring them in so you guys can read them. The stack was probably about three inches high. The majority of the parents made comments just like you just did. And, and it really, it's encouraging to, of course, we knew it anyways.
Yeah.
You know?
I think every morning I run into his brother. When I'm, quickly talk my girls off at daycare, race to the Powell Firehouse.
Yes.
And every morning he waves to me, it doesn't matter where I am, he notices my black car 'cause I, I gotta hurry. He waves to me every morning. And I mean, really, what other bus driver or anybody would do that?
That's true. And, and I totally agree with you, a hundred percent. And a lot of the parents, I have to say, nothing but good things to say about the bus drivers. And, and the one comment that kept coming up is, if it's not broke, why fix it?
That's right.
And I love that. And I think that's, that is important too.
And what would happen to our kids, sorry to interrupt, if we moved to, you know, the bus company? They would miss out on a whole bunch of field trips. I mean, I went on a field trip with my kindergarten, we went and saw Pete the Cat. Would that be able to do that?
That is one thing we're not...
I mean, it costs so much money to run to Bennington from here. I mean, the buses in Bennington cost a fortune and we're right in Bennington.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the kids would miss out.
But that, that part hasn't been, I mean, there's so many different things that, that are, they're, they're in the pool. And, and field trips is one of them. And, and this board here is, is fighting tooth and nail to keep our buses. But I appreciate it.
Yep.
And I'll tell you, if it comes down to a point where we need to put it to a vote somewhere, we're gonna do that too.
Oh, then call me up and...
I, we will. Did you get her name, Tammy? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, we appreciate that. Your, your parents are welcome all the time. So I guess what I'm trying to, I'm trying to decide whether it's next Thursday? Is, is the next SVSU?
Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, Wednesday's the, all right, all right. I may even show up and ask for the request.
I would just like to say something. I talked to Tina DuVall last night, and that's the summer rec program that the town does. If we do not have busing, that will no longer be, they have to have a bus driver. One year they didn't, they went from seventy kids down to twenty. So if we don't have our own buses, that will no longer exist.
That's true. I just emailed her and confirmed that they pay half of the bus.
We also had that discussion too, but yes.
Right. Yeah, that is important. There's so many things that rely on our, our buses and our drivers that...
But it's, you know, the whole process, like, well, she's thinking, she, she's gotta have something to do with job. It'd be a shame to lose it.
And that's my job, gonna end at the end of June, or?
No.
No.
As far as we concerned.
You're guaranteeing that.
We're almost guaranteeing as far as we can. It's beyond imagining that their jobs will end July first. I can't imagine it. Can you imagine, Cindy?
No. No. My biggest thing is, what's the fine? I always like to throw that in there. Can you do it?
So you're actually counting on a one-year waiver, but...
We're asking for two.
Putting it through two.
We're, we're asking for two. Yes. We're gonna go for the gusto. We're not gonna mess around with one year. We want two. We wanna be aligned with the legislators because they don't know what they're doing at this point. If they're gonna take two more years to figure out what's, what's up and what's down, I think we should be able to. I mean, it's only fair.
And there have been changes with that new bill that went through? And what, and what that will mean to you? It only just went through, that H three sixty-one?
It's not signed. It's not law.
No, but they did make changes. I mean, they change every day, they're changing.
I've been, I've been religiously following it and I'm getting totally confused.
They keep making changes, yeah.
Totally confused.
So we, we don't know whether to move forward with the, the mini-bus thing or we're still in limbo.
It is. I think at this point, I think I would like to take one step at a time. I wanna, I wanna make sure we have our drivers, our buses. We, we haven't sat down yet actually and, and did a, a numbers. We haven't done that yet. And we are still gonna do it. I would do, I would leave.
Yeah, they're, they're working on it.
You know? So I mean, at that point too, we're gonna throw everything in as to what we're doing, A, B, C, D, and, and list that. And then at that point, maybe we can turn around and say, well, this is...
Well, we have been talking about that for several months.
I know.
We're still dragging our feet on the whole process.
Good things come slow, Joel.
Even if we got a small bus, but even for two years, it would be a...
Major savings.
Major savings for the little things we do now with the big bus.
Yeah. And, and I think what we need to do is get that list. The board needs to see that list before we go to the SVSU meeting. In other words...
Do we have money in the budget for the little bus?
Uh, I do believe we do.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
There is money there.
Yes. Yes.
Actually, to do what we wanna do, we'd save more than the price of the new bus in one year. Right?
I'm hoping. But, but I need to see, not, not being in the bus and driving here or driving there, the board doesn't know. We need, we need to sit down with Todd, I guess.
Well, I had figures on that.
No.
I did have figures on about what it would cost us. And it was less than, than, less than a third. And I figured if we went just a third, we, you know, couldn't go wrong. But it, we could do it for less than a third.
So you're saying if we purchased the mini-bus, it'd be cheaper than, than riding the bigger bus?[1656.28]